Six part, we'll all be in order for the order of business question.
The allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic or which stands one nation under God in the middle of the liberty and justice for all.
February twenty.
Awesome.
Second, any further speculation, my notes. In the land of our people. Uh, number four, what would I would say?
Thank you so well. There's been some, there's always people who want to take the different aspects, you can probably give me some.
Yeah, there is. To the, I think we both know the bottom on, because I had an experience.
Yeah, I mean, I did it and I took a long, you see, there's someone who wants to, you know, I took a long line and questioned like, or did he get that?
I tried to focus on everything that's been going on. All right, well, we do about there. Uh, town reports are now available, we have a year tonight, they are available at the town office, the library already, we'll get them to stores in the morning. Um, Department of Labor did respond to the penalty discussion, they were pleased with, uh, meeting with the headcount investor a couple of weeks ago. Um, about the labor violations and they cited back in Congress. Uh, along the further was that, I mean, our costs, some direct, some indirect, all filed in all in terms of going to the tenant's, meaning the private feel. Uh, and showed them what was done and what a good amendment to try to, uh, in terms of saving. Let's just say I was discouraged, disappointed, they did not hold anything, but, you know, my time, my travel expense, all that, it was just terrible. And then the department kind of sold it as the opportunity to reduce penalties. So anyway, I did send a letter to them and said, well, this is disappointing, your charging is way less than I'm in fact about that. Um, so anyway, we're in good shape, so I reached out to safety workers, that division of the, uh, Department of Labor and asked them to come in after time, and then things kind of quiet down. Consider, we need to run departments with the favor, uh, which will help overall, will avoid, uh, future, um, inspections for period of time in law to get that on, on insurance as we want. So, grab six dollars are available, uh, until February twenty ninth for the town meeting election. Um, as well as the president's primary on Monday or Tuesday, which means we will also be closed on Monday or Tuesday, mark for fifth month of staff election. Uh, the round of airport terminal grants was announced, and we were not on that list, and so unfortunately, we will resubmit, um, in the next round, we're in that. The FAA has appointed a new bureaucrat to the position of overseeing the disadvantaged business enterprise program. Uh, development process for airports, which is either just a standard boilerplate into a post there, and then it's done. And now they're putting this to the record alone and the post and holding a public meeting for things which people don't usually care about. Uh, and then reposted and reposted thing, and all that stuff, and we're having to put out a pretty great, uh, ten or eleven, so. Um, that's very frustrating, but that's February twenty eighth, September seventeen thirty online, and to email it even, uh, address, it's been filed or call the number, that will be posted online. Uh, it is posted online already, within minutes. Uh, and when the smoking meeting with DOT and F A, they discussed the acquisition of the snowmower, so the normal equipment, it looks like that's our practice, we require that point for the winter. Um, so that's all good and well, um, started. All right, so sorry, uh, in terms of cemeteries, we issued the R and P for the Riverview Cemetery project, we did not get any proposals there, but I did have somebody in charge of a law. Um, asking for a major to redirect the website idea, but it's going to be able to fill, um, what we need there. Um, and was really a one off, it'd be having a patent, you know, that type of thing. Uh, North Lawn resident Matt Gube is scheduled to start tomorrow, is a new voting force officer. Uh, he lives on twelve months, uh, in the fourth state statute, he's capable of wire certifications. Uh, he will be ramping up the meetings tomorrow, he'll be discussing it tomorrow, um, and we're getting four days, you know, state of training and the note from other programs, like, I just showed throughout the region. Uh, to get a really high rate of experience with anyone to do that, is quite kind of, uh, if anybody unqualified, that would be neat, so. Um, anyway, uh, hopefully there, he's a nice guy and involved, um, he's got a willing experience, so he's not like those, like, you know, the new design for it tomorrow.
So they, I would be definitely with the same, but the, 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 now what I'm talking about, should he just not be on the ballot, because that's the, my, 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 or?
That's true. You're not getting anything, but, I mean, we stayed, so it's not, you know, we got four months to get those and then, yeah.
Okay.
But it's not, I wouldn't say it would be competitive.
Which is. Well, how available is it? I mean, I know it was really nice for the state being required, being, being left out of all of that position, it made it very. Nice, very, I realize it, you know.
So, uh, I'm asking for sixteen hours for the monitors, believe me, uh, but then all available by appointment, and then the rule is solid, for certain companies. Uh, twenty board meeting, uh, is set on course for March fourteen, which is a ways out, that would be there first, I believe it would move more after having. Uh, over to economic development, TIP is going to meet next Tuesday, the twenty seventh at five, there's no problem, we've all won points. Potential with S and D C, um, and they're going to be careful for some information, some guidelines to consider, um, in terms of how they're looking forward to doing some that, like, what we're going to be doing. Different side, you see, it's like a director, just someone said economic, uh, provided, and kind of more with play and do, so operating, I could give anybody an acknowledgement, and then just do that. Uh, this last week, uh, one of our CDs, it's scouted a new savings with George, so we were able to reinvest that at five percent in another six months for that one oh two two, uh, all the way over. Um, they also were looking to see new on a three and a half percent rate from all of our other accounts. Uh, they were willing to keep that for us, uh, and experimentally doing the CD, and so that's going to be held at a different, you know, and we were just, we were ready to do it fast. We received the President's statement for twenty twenty three, that was above flat, uh, against last year, revenue sharing versus last year. Uh, nobody really know why, but the state revenue for through the roof and rainy day funding, super healthy, but they're unfortunately slightly down on revenue agreement. Uh, and then our last line, sewer, third day notices were applied, and then mid mark, those were, they're on the data, fly, already focused and posing tomorrow. At ten thirty, we were stemming up here and getting totally, it just doesn't teach you anything to twenty eight month, um, constitutes all the past, they're found many. The mass communications is protecting voiceless and voice call, uh, platform went live on Friday. I was out of an office, so then they put it out on Friday, got put out on Monday morning, uh, there's pretty much just a case running, but. A boot to that yesterday, mid morning, and, you know, we've got a pretty wide reach, going in the radius around North Lawn. Um, just in that two days, we had a lot of people, you know, a hundred and ten, so. Don't want to, right, and we're seeing, all, all in all, a pretty good level of what folks are selecting to give them down the bar. So that all for good, I raised them for where we've got emergency, but auto population, we've got, we've got. Um, but, you know, the opportunity of things like the library, um, we're programming, and that's still about thirty five or forty people, out of the hundred and ten or something like that. To do the communication mechanism for, uh, that type of, so. If you have any other categories that you think anybody wants, let me know, it's a bit like for that, but we can always add other texts, such as a word to this number, for them to get, or change, so. Um, anyway, so that's kind of the rent we took for us, and that river, information, of course, it's going to bump up, you and I, but, you know, we have this fluctuation, people that live on the river approach and whatnot. Uh, nobody has good ways to move work, but, uh, this is a pretty good start for us. In terms of the fee of service and re-scouting, we all, we posted down on Facebook after the last meeting, we also went ahead and grew up seventy five dollar Facebook ad. Uh, targeting the illegal in the area, as of this morning, and had it expire, we did thirty two million, that's seventy five dollars, so. That was just small sort of money to, um, promote that, nobody else had done it. Um, you know, and, I mean, there was a lot of shares from the neighbor in town, and so, nobody in the county was small in market, as it is, um, affected the county every year, but they've given out the rolling human blocks for fire, and everybody was resolved.
There's nothing wrong with that, you know, what?
It's all, it's all, and, I mean, right one failure, that's something that, it was not toward what. Obviously, we are, in my, but we're the individual, we know it's not, and I'm, I'm, I'm. So, some are, some are, I know that's awful, I mean, I didn't put it here, but we had, uh, a gentleman, the other day, that's about how well, there's about how well, or they're selling pretty much, right? They had one, you know, they gave them money, they were, they were, they were, they were standing, I'm not, certainly not, well, they didn't, they were, they were great, we just don't really, no, this last. And they took them about two weeks at five, that's pretty empty. Whereas, they, I don't know how their experience was, and it's actually, they were, they were, they were.
Everybody that I know, looking forward to that, like, that's so killing, wasn't that, you know, that?
Uh, and then, uh, safety grant application, it's kind of like a safety, traffic control, so to say, but, I'm looking at housing, science, et cetera, it was home stocks, whole towns, things like that, that can be used to support, and everything, but then also fireworks and fire. So, with, except for the night, they paid two thirds, um, where the background, meaning this, pulling them together. Uh, you're very likely aware of the characots, excuse the jorts here in the Lord clock, in Mercer, uh, both involved us here in the town office. Uh, they saw there to be safety in terms of occupancy, um, and that, in a certain, in a certain, in terms of mold, uh, failure to get like the permit to be safe, in terms of giving it work. Um, and so, anyway, those, ultimately, they're going to be on the highlight, it's probably ended that, but, um, the pain was the better than what it is, and we were too young, and there's, well, there are good moments, well. Uh, but we had the first experience of scaring, so, and, and, and our first month of investment, so, we went to find another voting force, and then, and, 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 and.
But uh that will help with the actually we only go on three. Nothing stops everybody from coming.
Right, but we initially had them coming in and expecting for us and that way we were.
When I first got here, I kind of knew. I didn't hear something that they don't need to write law. And so we got to where we got to go and then doing things. What were the seven violations and how did you get the violence? And when that's not bad. Alright, uh so on this side for one, uh not for the discussion, to none, always favor. Uh discussion action on.
I'm looking forward to the fourth unit in the amount sixteen thousand four hundred and thirty-five dollars.
And well, in the second, in the second, one of the areas with their favorite book. But with going down back to our current operations, the area of the ground. All right, Tom. I've been house view on.
If someday you're gonna be tired being chairman, well, there's chairman in here that can admit when they might have been wrong in their.
Was all that they they didn't see. I'm not sure. I know that the water is because they having problems up there and developing the project, but. We are capable of looking at file and whenever we have. I'm able to look to get a power or they're even not having a game.
Richard, the next question. That area that. Who are with the water, the water leak that running down. There's more that bank that is blocking us to exactly cover it. Seamer as well.
So I was gonna have anything to do with that, but theoretically.
It goes upstream pretty high feeling. I mean, that whole section is probably a seventy-five to a hundred foot section of God real.
So we're looking at. The possibility of having more water.
No, I go very close before he tells. Very, 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 very whether they definitely patch out because that was a water leak. And between high water and water leak can compromise that section, but if you want. You own that one upstream, it's what thirty-five to a hundred feet of of God real. It's always compromised in banks like that. And I was wondering if that was what I was asking. Do they know that one whole section there may not.
Not really. You know, it's not that broad. What would you ever do with the road in time? So I put it back in when we were just talking about this. I don't know if it's.
See, it's it's funny that they really are concerned about that. To breathe behind a tussle because when we talked about that at the beginning, oh, it's hasn't affected anything. But if you look at it, it really has scoured out that day. It is not.
And I'm not, not my speed, but I feel like it's blocking a hundred feet. The amount of debris that was piled up there less than we then plus, but. Yeah, you can see it.
And we just.
Uh well, how big is our whatever wave on? That section of road very much.
Matt.
Push it back into the.
There was a time. When my father was just here, we remember that there was actually four players that could. Really? Yes. So that's in the last. Eighty years. In eighty-seven, they. Yeah, there was a strip of, it was strip of land between the road and the river. Eighty years ago. So that's how much it's. Yeah.
I mean, so this is all. Yeah, it makes sense. But if you don't do something, if that means you're dead in there. There you're, it's gonna be your well at. And then. We'll be on.
So where are you, where are you saying that?
Think we will come in and take seventy-five eighty.
But part of that, and I'm just asking. What I'm saying is so that if we can't come to a clear. Ending for their stack technically they could. Yes, so if we can't move it. We can't find a way to move it successfully. Then you're just gonna say. You know, we're gonna shut the hell off. Ultimately, we'll shut the hell off.
It's all about funding. End of the world.
Yes.
You know, we've got a lot of money, we want small projects, we're gonna stay in one.
The risk is it's deeper than I said it is because we, because we. We didn't think it was.
Maybe move the world and find a way.
Yes, but.
You have a whole lot of money on.
Don't think that we lost the building away.
Alright, uh moving forward, uh discussion action on accepting four codes. Okay, this is up for now. It should have been done in last meeting before we released one back. You have uh one, two, three, four, five, six total. But thirteen ways to. Thirteen ways maybe to provide the product. And so. We have to get some kind of even talk about how we dispose it by. This is for now, we're here to say we're accepting it tonight and then um.
So one question, we're. We only have a minute to assign how to dispose it. We can have that one that burns. And we just want to issue that for the cloud, but do we have to dispose it or could we take that and make it into some, like, do we have to get rid of it? Or can we just keep that and use it?
Or used to maybe keep it in another, but they have to move our lines. It's terrible. After the house burned. When when after the baby disposed of the house. Fair amount of value. Right, it's never been given out. Correct, so we live far as that it's possible that they would wave it. It's all the property that we're looking for.
Let's just stop something. I mean, and this is kind of looking at this. Kind of like the various way, but like you've got a house, but it's. Kind of rubbish. You're never gonna be able to sell it. You just go to Lincoln on some stuff and you know, like. Then all of a sudden they came back and then we can have a hey meeting or something and maybe we'll know.
We can stop.
It's shady, but like.
So eventually we will have to get to an R and P to qualify whatever. And then. And whatever you get, we start by our. And that's probably. But normally we're gonna take sort of product. And then.
So I I do wonder if it would make sense like. That that's made a property as a set that if it would make sense for us, we're proud of that. Just thinking about like. You know, where that is, they own the girl, especially people walking, things like that. Might not be location wise, but that's specific. Thinking about.
Yeah, as far as parking areas go. Four readers.
Yeah, I mean. You get for some, you know, parades and all that. You wanna say we got there.
To put what are you even more sorry that they're laying playing around. My office.
But the other side of that is what about? I'll go forward to accept the product. For this site, we're discussing. Uh discussion action on. Okay, so we bring this up for the second time last. Some of them did it out for and we came back to decide seventy-five thousand. And so I wouldn't bring it to others. So now it's come in at four hundred and sixty-five of the low bill. Uh and then one of those was our budgetary estimate that. After COVID. It's one hundred ninety-four thousand. And so when it came in form, that I am testing, anybody's excited, we need to provide them with the name of this to the board. It's a while and go have a good time.
You think, you think, I mean, dang. You're gonna sit down after accepting. The only question, the only question I would have is. What are the engineer? I think they maybe need something.
Well, it's whatever has to be more. So we have a hundred thousand.
Yeah, but.
Yeah, you lose a hundred dollars and lose something.
So we had to go with the air design to get that hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, but if you spend too much.
Yeah, we can do it for two hundred grand and not use it, we'll still have that plan.
Well, we'll better contact me this afternoon and say, cause I had, I told him it's not a good idea to do that. I visit what they give them.
No, I know. I'm telling you right now, if you could re-engineer that with somebody in this area, you could get. That's crazy.
Yeah, that's so expensive.
Year, year ago. Year ago, Nancy, who you were. That that fight is ridiculous.
Like, it's a very valid call.
Yes. But I'm just saying, I think there's a better option out there for better money. I just think that I, I think that. You know, you know, what I think.
Uh yes, so uh so it's just a color and so Tom, we call it what they're trying and I don't know his size.
Yes.
The actual color decided on, uh what are we talking? No, not like. Oh, it's a hundred feet. Twenty hundred feet, okay, I didn't, I didn't realize that.
Well, if you look at the road base and how deep the road is from screen bottom. When I hit your slopes, that color, I believe that color is going to be.
My normal driver does.
Yeah, you're looking at a hundred feet color here.
What is that kind of fair amount of value? Just buy that color. Yeah.
Well, it's an engineered color, but like you just, we can just. That you said, it's an engineered color and it's. It's. Concrete because that way there. We don't have to. It's not, it's not metal. But I think that there's, you you have to do these all about. Natural one and all appearance that across. And we can't be working right here little color. So and I, and I do understand the theory behind that. I do understand that I had love and you run a green. Fitters on one side of the earth, because we do get food. They have, they have a stat.
And that's all. They're both. Not only because they're first, problem is more.
Twenty-one. And because there was free processing, so the twenty-one from the.
And there's color still.
Right.
There's first over there, that's not.
And then we were told to do by the engineering. They were gonna take them on and go and do all the science and grant application. On. But in a strange way, like the fact that. So and I think that they got a hundred thousand dollar grant, we think it's a grant. So just.
Well, I think, I think if you could get it on cheap, I'm with Dylan though, because if if you could get it on cheap, like what's a hundred thousand dollars?
So my, my thing is I just thought it'd be near. Half person. Kind of like the same thing. Seventy dollars. They. Two thousand bucks. Some of the worst. Seventy bucks. Fourteen dollars. I know, I don't see that. This is a, this is a four thousand thing, right? I keep going, it's thirty thousand dollars for a hundred feet of time. So even if it was a. Seventy thousand, you know, you can't get about three.
I don't think there's any way you're gonna get the hundred thousand dollars.
I'm back to the four hundred dollars and save the two hundred dollars by. Hundred, saving the hundred dollars, right? I just, that's ridiculous.
Being tied to that hundred thousand dollars doesn't cost money. And I understand we need to.
Costs a hundred to save it. So I was missing here, right?
You want me to go there?
As far as. I it's the most not there to table this. And so we can get some more information about how it offers. Both using that brand and not using brands, so we have a better analysis from both situations.
We paid him one hundred and fifty-four. So when we went through with this, it was a hundred and nine forty-nine. Now we're beyond. And when we lose our. Our rent. Thinking time by. If we take the can, if we have someone else, we knew it's gonna take thirty days, sixty days, or we never use. We found friends. So. We did. Able to find. For the.
You change all around, that's what I'm saying. Maybe, maybe. I know, I know.
I know, I don't. I don't think you. It's never getting back. I know, I know. I in the lead time. For no call from. And where, where do we, where do we put this?
So I do go.
Right now, it's, we've got a couple of other projects, but. When you have, this was training the transit hall of purpose and the carriage hall of origin that.
It's a fine.
And how long even decide on it?
Right, I'd be an incident. It is not good to. Well, I know it is. It is, it's lifeblood is on the back end, that's for sure.
I do struggle with this smaller, I haven't seen it. I don't want to. I just for myself. If we're always gonna have to do anything more than can say. The other option is. They listen to here, then if you put it. Well, fishing. They think we did it well, I don't necessarily agree with that. But. They said maybe the contract would be the. The contract would cover. I don't, I don't know if we're very good money, though. I don't. Maybe we did ourselves, maybe. Body dimension. I would see.
It's all of their. It's, it's a big.
Not necessarily.
No, but the other thing is that it is a, there's a. Total work. It's not, it's not an easy project. I mean, no matter what you put in there, you're gonna have to have that estimated number, big estimated on both sides. Estimating. Thousands of yards to get this kind of a week ago. You know, it's not an easy project. The one thing that saves everybody's butt is that you can hold the road. Right, well, so you don't have to have that traffic before, you could actually work on the project without. Trying to manage one lane, but still.
Note that they can close that down, they included.
Yeah, I already gave it.
So they're not.
So this is already labeled red.
That's not the color. That's too much.
It, I mean, look at the guy there.
That's not the color.
Um yes, it is.
Okay, okay.
And you can't just like cut the bottom.
It's a six.
You're looking at bottom. Like, there's, there's a couple thousand yard of gravel on.
Can't just be like.
Off of that color, it's probably fifty feet down. Yeah, it's, it's, it's a big.
This is all. There, the car drive on bottom of the screen.
Fifteen feet up, that's why you're gonna take so much material. See how it's got rusted on the car? The, the, the color is very much compromised.
This is your road. From now. So this is all uphill. Not all uphill. There is some road in the cover. Yeah, four times. Cover's here and the road is way up here.
And that's what.
That cover, you know, that was. Oh, so it's five hundred thousand.
It was four hundred and sixty-five and it's. You know.
Make a whole road for that.
Boy, if you just add two miles.
Must be a bit concrete.
No, 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 no. The problem is, it's the book. And from now on, you may not get a color like that replaced with a color like that because you. You, you, you got to be able to have safe passage for all your credits. You know, if you're all mighty, you compromise the engineering of the color, color, a circle is made so that it impresses all against it. You cut the bottom of it, it crushes.
And it's like a building code, like something that was suitable forty years ago, like when you build a new house, you can't do that. But now it's in, they, they usually must. So. Yeah.
But see that. See how, okay, to have a color work properly, you gotta have. Draw coming up here. But draw doesn't allow all the sound, whatever was. Take it up through that color.
And now, if you're in a book, you made the book tell. Why, you have to put a lot.
But. I understand the.
So there is more. Is there a review something? No, you go further.
No.
Hey, hey, I don't. I'm gonna, like, that's all, I'm gonna let you know. Put it out there. Or they have missed the opportunity there. There's going to be so much to take. We can't pick up savings who are being given, that we either have. Go with as a scrap project for the community. I don't know a lot of these, you know, it's too much, but it's a situation that we find and we can't. So there will be some, but I don't know if our savings will be there as much as their local contract. I'll do long term, whatever, the part of difference, all the difference here. So my recommendation would be to reject all of this and then with. So yeah, obviously the noise in the second. Sorry, sorry, but. Hopefully that works. That's a lot. Alright, discussion regarding capital projects. We're just free to add this on the agenda, um kind of last minute, but not really, because something to keep in your mind. This is a word document of this life where, uh I mean, I have kind of bones together, but. Um over time, you guys have been adding things in, uh these are all of our necessary. Sort of assets, we will be equipment. Couple of projects, loose projects. Um bucks. In the road, the idea is that this is kind of a guide, we sort of by possible, sort of by project data, sort of by department. Uh and take a look at what we need to be putting down. So it. I emailed this news list up to you, uh when I was doing, out of the room of one of the major. Uh one of them that has a fully integrated, working from the table, they supply the project. They simply they will be list. Uh the chief is going to probably talk to them and see if they're in the news. Uh to me, where they are, where they're going to the event. And so they're like, this is something that we try to do better, but keep them qualified and maintain. But also I'm looking for anything that you see that you wanna pull off or you wanna put on. Um I know that had a couple of things we talked about this last week. And so one of those things would directly go away. It's the communities brought up. We can put it on a list, it's a matter of words, it's been prioritized in both the process. Not that it's something I really want. So far, but it's. Not that it's going to happen, it's probably something I really want, that is, so far, but it's, it's going to be pulling in one. More.
Well, I mean, I, I love the idea of putting a four line at the, this box is done, but I also think that if we had, you know, like a large area on the back, so we could do it for everybody. You know, I know we've been doing stuff in the past, but like, we're delivering that, and we'd be kind of like, better off, people doing more events and things like that, and we'd be able to attract different activities happening, like a group family building to. Like that and have a safe space that has family thought being, plenty of room and that's acceptable to every. Well. Well, we have to put in a question.
I mean, yeah, I didn't want to have a lot. Or something we saw, kind of psychology and break, other than that, I'm seeing them.
Especially my, we're going to borrow from father, you mentioned said power, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I don't even know what that is.
So right now, we have these, uh, space on pounds and they'll. And. Access to something that we officially, but okay, because we've got a long, some power and communications in this space, and getting part of time.
I get that.
It's a radio tower.
So are you telling that like, like, so I don't know which bands, but it's off there, or?
Well, yeah, it's really great, same way, uh, it's, right, for all reasons. But it was, you know, right, we, we, not, not like wide.
And so this just works like, is it self finding work, or like?
Uh, so, but I mean, so, whose name was, now, sorry. Right, so it is strictly, strictly for.
Yeah.
For, you know, the worst, uh, right, we, we are, we're not trying to block them on.
Yeah, it's like, it seems like a, uh, takeaway of communication for sometimes, or anything.
So that's the extent of fun. The, the tax side or something like this, it's going to be kind of low, on better business properties, so we're going to avoid, we're going to use this, something like that, that's all. We look at the possible of. Really, but, uh, if you have to lose some minutes, you want to respect the work, you can. You know, naturally, how like, you know, that, you wouldn't waste money, right?
Yeah.
You would lose your space on what happened, that all these other towns, and so possibly space on some that. We, uh, we use on, we use, take a little hill, and then we take the four other feeder that is on, uh, what the machines, or. And then we'll make it done, and then, and then.
That's, that's, and they're not going to take, who's going to take these are power? Who is taking the power, it's something that around, we can. They're going to want to take these are power, you're, you know.
The, the department can give. No.
They want with me, you do it, it's a set nine hour plan.
No, you don't have the space, they, you know. So, you know, you're like, well, yeah, if you put a dollar, it's pretty good, it's good. Well, it's, it's like, great, but you're thinking like, just great, you're talking about. Thunderhill, putting power on, you know, anybody, it's like, putting whatever they want, G P S, anything on, I mean. That's just a power. Not what you want to say on the world, anybody, it's right, you don't know what you're talking about, you're not getting that power. Right. Right. They were there, and so, and they were, they, they're, they're old, and it's part of. That's where we have to go, that's. So, so much for that, I mean, probably what I justify, like, we didn't find a way to move the button, it was certainly useful. Uh, therefore, we were, we used the power, but I think, and when we were able to, for that, spending some of these long years, they're, they're, we're something wrong there. So. But that's more of a, they have to decide, so. It can't be going to the council, you have a lot, you for, you sidewalk, he's putting, but it's on here, isn't it? Yeah. Yeah.
Didn't you ever seen the project lately?
So that's, we still, and I, I don't even know if, uh, library, like, that's a, a, another location, or has, or even a smaller location? I don't know. Well, I don't, it's really time to work, and you, some, you know, it's, uh, you know, it's. Yeah, because the storage land is difficult, I would love us to be a very good water library, uh, but, uh, where the people that are. And what you're going to go out.
But, but now it's.
Over there, yeah, but, but it's very. Well, yeah, that was just, yeah, we did. And how, we got to do it too much, that's a lot of talking, talking to the internet, possibly. It would be.
You know, in nature, it's like, it's on the outside, and it's, it's, a lot of people, and, and. He was going to.
At the time, there is no other place that's sort of, not available, stable, times, uh, running back, or also, maybe. Yeah, yeah. No, it's, I mean, I, the lottery is a lot, I'm surprised.
Probably, but people, it's like, having a time, or, you know, again, a lot of people can do this, but, come on, people are starting to. It's not like, it's like a, oh my gosh, if we don't have this, people who started, and now, and they're a little, no, it's not, it's not the first. I think, I, it's never. I, we go to people that have been here for seven, ten days.
I almost. But I think, I would like, I would like. Very.
No, I'm going.
But still, yeah, same, but it's too far, right, when you're there, then it would be, yeah.
Well, I don't want to bring it, you know, inside the front bathroom, so. For anybody.
But, no. Uh, right, so thi- this is really, we're just putting this to everybody, give it to them, well, stop, and you, like, I want to see, you know, digital thought, you know, we're going to. Everybody has anything in mind about, I'm being, like, James. Because I, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't. And, yeah, then, so the recent last time, so that we have money, we're open, when it's been spared, and, like, knowing the finances and money stuff, as we did, or the powers to. Figure out what we do, to set aside, and here, it may be, I would just put it, yeah.
Um. I was, maybe, can you tell me about?
Uh, Martin's in there.
They don't really know what he is. No, I did, I didn't mean that amount of money, I meant.
You just mean like this.
Side project, yeah. Yeah, right, so, right, for anything to cover and that.
Uh, they're right. Who are making, who's going to do.
I think that's what we get, the fire on some of the, it's really, I think, for like, I'm a, but it's not.
So all the, our, one of that, it, so the tip is, maybe, just think about that, and just let the money spend it, and it's extended, but we don't, we don't sit down, and sit in the bed. Something, but we just, I want to make it more, and then we got one, or there's a product, and we do, and we want to get products. They're going to improve, they're going to. Well, that's going to be easy to get at, from. Question, thing, there, now, the tip is like, it's like. It's going to be plenty, now, in six, six, is that, you made it, and then.
No, no, I started to turn around.
Okay, but you're kind of getting four and a half, all right, you're just staying by, like, you've done, my, my. Actually, but people, it's originally thirty, forty, forty thousand dollars a year, yeah, forty thousand. So, it's supposed to be for, for years, or looking at probably thirty, ten million. I think, but, but, well, that's, we, when you want to do that, but, um. It's a pretty good, I mean. Even if I didn't buy it, it's quite. From taxes, but they really, you know, I mean, I mean, whatever. But, but we've got money, very, very important, because money, we don't want to. We know, but we've been not, we did spend a lot, and we did, so we, we, for the, which is now that we have a project. But, in the tip, something that we've written was sidewalk, we did a little thing, right, but. And now we went, came out of this study that we didn't, and we do. So we need that, like, for any, well, like, products and that, but that is, those are. They, typically, we can pay them a thousand for a year, and, um. And, and they, 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 they're not, the program wasn't improved, but. Yeah, they're trying to change. But there are. Always.
So we don't have any. Actually.
No. So if you don't give anything more off, or anything, then.
That's.
Not, but, but.
Anyway, you, you definitely know, and I was, um, going, uh, if you can, you keep that a bit of this. You're telling me, you're, I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to. You're not. It's the right.
Yep, all, uh, all the business, she's like, more than I need, more than I need. We're, emulating, we're going to most, um, structured, I'm using.
When you.
Seven, four, seven. I definitely have, we just do some releasement, and then I run a sentence, maybe, uh, what we're making, sort of, uh. Lines down, like, actually, but. Oh, that's. So if it was, but it's done, I need a boat to offer, it really assigned, and I got one of these, something like that, two years.
So.
Forty three seconds, forty seven. Forty nine, forty ten. And then I need another one to offer, I need to sign my own extension, and everything's just going to be fine.
Right.
Forty nine, thirty, forty nine, forty. And maybe we can, uh. Uh, here in five days, when they, I do.
That's it, and I'm going to do them. Well, this is. Um, can I give them anything?
Oh, here's a note.
Well, I'm, I was.
Right.
I mean, so, it was. I had a video. Man of the year, he just.
Yes, yes, to have them both.
Okay, no, no, I'm.
Okay, now, right, now, if I can say to return, any further discussion, they're none, or, okay, they're.